A regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen called to order on Tuesday, March 9th at 7:30 PM via teleconference. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Levering and Alderman Tenza will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As President of the Board of Aldermen, I find that due to the state of emergency declared by the governor as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4, the public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized by the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. To access Zoom, please refer to the agenda or the city's website for the meeting link. To join by phone, dial 1-929-2056099. The meeting ID is 884-54461686 and the passcode is 724002. The public may also view the meeting on TV Channel 16. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall and the National Public Library. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting via phone or Channel 16, please call 603-821-2049 and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. So would the clerk please call the rolls?
Alderman O'Brien.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Cleve.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone in this room.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Dow.
I am present. I can hear the proceedings and I am alone.
Alderman Karen.
I am here. I can hear everything and I am alone.
Alderman Clemmons.
I am here. I'm by myself and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Lopez.
I'm here. I'm by myself and I can see the proceedings.
Alderman Tenza.
I am present. I am by myself and I can hear everyone.
Alderwoman Lou.
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Jevie.
I'm here alone and I can hear the proceedings.
Alderman Schmidt.
I am present, alone and can hear everyone.
Alderman Laws.
I am here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Cleaver. Alderman Harriet Gathright.
I am present. I can hear everyone and I am alone.
Alderman Wiltshire.
I'm here. I'm alone and I can hear everyone.
You are 14 in attendance.
Thank you. Also in attendance this evening is Mayor Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. Well, it's good to see you all once again. First, I wanted to mention the city's effort to eradicate the pandemic. Numbers have gone down recently, which is of course very good news. But you might remember that a few, two, three months ago, we had almost 600 active and identified cases of COVID-19. As of yesterday, that number was 86, so it's down considerably. And of course, we know that we need to continue to be careful with wearing masks and social distancing, avoiding large gatherings, but people are beginning to get vaccinated. Our Public Health Department, which has been allocated some doses to reach the inner city and other populations, minority populations that are more difficult to get to engage with vaccinations, they vaccinated over 1,100 people. And of course, the state is running its site out at Nashua South, vaccinating people every day. So that seems to be going pretty well. We do have a grant for first reading on the agenda. That is a $1.5 million grant to assist the state with their vaccine efforts. The way that money needs to be used is it will pay for overtime for first responders, police officers and firefighters who are at, who will be at the vaccination sites and assisting the state in running those sites. When that occurs, the city will be reimbursed through this grant for the overtime required. So that is good and will, I'm sure, help to keep the sites running well and reimburse the city for the overtime costs that we incur. A couple of other items on the agenda, Madam President. We of course have the outdoor dining extension for this year, which will, once enacted by the board, be implemented pursuant to the plan, the detailed plan that you see attached to the resolution. That has been reviewed by the committee. In addition, we have a proposal we're making to rename the Broad Street Parkway, rename that Veterans Drive, because as you've seen, I'm sure all of you, that over the past season, we erected banners for about 30 veterans. Families pay for these banners and then we put them up on the light poles. And as you go down the parkway, you can see the photos, the likenesses of veterans of Nashua and other families. So that seemed to go very well and was a good way to honor many of our veterans. So we're proposing to rename that the Broad Street Parkway Veterans Drive or Veterans Parkway. Madam President, there is something regarding the BIDA, the creation of an expendable trust fund for the BIDA. There's been a lot of discussion about that over the last couple of days. The resolution itself does not allocate any money at this point and that is not required to have a valid expendable trust fund, and that you will hear from the legal department. The issue of whether money should be allocated into it was discussed with the BIDA way pre-COVID, you know, a couple of years ago, because we anticipate the money's not here yet, but that when the second phase of the Renaissance Development begins, when the closing occurs, the city will realize funds from the sale of the second parcel of land. That sale and development is required by the development agreement that was signed by the city 10 years ago, or maybe even more. But when those funds arrive, some of it, the BIDA would like to use some of it to develop, to try to bring about other economic development projects. That could be possible, and it's something that we discussed with the BIDA some, as I said, maybe a couple of years ago, definitely pre-COVID. But in terms of how much money might be allocated in that direction and how it would be used, that could be discussed in detail when an appropriation is actually proposed. A couple of other items, Madam President. First, I wanted to congratulate you. There was a really nice article on the Nashua Children's Home in the Union Leader. I thought, of course, they told just part of the story of all the good work that is done there and has been done for 100 years or more. And finally, I have some sad news to report, which came via Alderman Lopez, which is that the mother Sandy Bellnap, Catherine Bellnap, passed away, I think, yesterday, very recently. That is of course sad, because Sandra and Catherine have had many politic people over for their porch parties, introducing their neighbors to candidates and office holders. Sandra's also been very active in the city, former planning board member, a advocate for the neighborhood. She keeps a beautiful, beautiful garden. But she's active in the arts and just in many ways has contributed to Nashua. So it's very sad that her mother Catherine passed away, and I'd like to extend my condolences to Sandra and all the rest of the family. That's all I have, Madam President, unless there are questions.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, just two things. First, just an observation in talking to DPW about the upcoming changes, it was a little confusing at first, but we have a Veterans Drive next to the National Guard, and we want to change the parkway to Veterans Parkway. So we have to change one of them to Veterans Parkway and one from Veterans Drive to something else. Otherwise, we end up with two streets with practically the same name, which is confusing. And then the second thing was a question to the mayor. In that there is funding to reimburse for overtime, is there any chance some of that funding could be used towards pensions, since pensions are calculated based on overtime and annual projections, or is that just wishful thinking?
Well, we can check that out. Probably certainly not any pensions beyond those hours expended, but we will check that out.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? I don't see anyone else. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Recognition period.
There was none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I will declare the minutes of the regular Board of Aldermen meeting of February 23rd, 2021, and the special Board of Aldermen meetings of February 24th, 2021, and March 1st, 2021 will be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Tim Cummings, Director of Economic Development, regarding the status update on Performing Arts Center project and a communication regarding the general status update on the Mohawk Tannery from Daniel Donovan, Chief Operating Officer, Nashville School District, regarding one-time budget funds fiscal year 2021. Communications from Matt Sullivan, Planning Department Manager, regarding the fiscal year 2022 Capital Improvements Program, regarding the referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed ordinance O2148, amending the residential district's ordinance NRO 19017 with respect to residential driveways, and referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed ordinance O2149, amending the Conservation Subdivision Supplemental Use Regulations found in NRO 19040, the Conservation Commission recommendation, and also a communication from the Planning Board's recommendation. Communication from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communication received from the public from Lori Wiltshire, President of the Board of Aldermen, regarding calling a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen on March 15th, 2021 at 7:00 PM for an update on the Mohawk Tannery.
There being no objection, I will accept the communications and place them on file.
Communications have also been received from Len Fornia, Superintendent of Woodlawn Pinewood Cemeteries, regarding a joint convention with Woodlawn Pinewood Cemetery's Board of Trustees and Linda Laflane, Chairman of the Board of Library Trustees, requesting a joint convention with the Board of Library Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications, place them on file, and schedule a joint convention with the Woodlawn Pinewood Cemetery's Board of Trustees and the Board of Library Trustees on Tuesday, March 23rd, 2021 at 7:30 PM via Zoom teleconference meeting. Just for the record, I just want to show that Alderman Cleaver joined us at 7:43. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Is anyone in the public, could you raise your hand in the chat? Derek Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President. My name is Derek Anderson. I am the owner of Wingate's Pharmacy at 129 Main Street. I wanted to discuss this evening the proposed expanded dining. I think that was a good hit last year. The restaurant certainly needed our assistance. The downtown landscape, I don't think, could maintain its intrigue if we lost restaurants last year. I think we're still in a period, even with the decreasing numbers so rapidly, that they still need assistance in the interim. However, I don't believe we should have the ordinance stating that this would end in November. The most likely, many of the restrictions will be lifted well before then. And I believe that once those restrictions on inside dining capacity are lifted, that the barrier should be removed and all businesses would have equal access to their customers. We found it very difficult for our patrons to find parking and to get into our pharmacy. Most pharmacy patrons are in and out within five or 10 minutes, at least at our store. And they find it, they're less willing to try to drive around the side streets and to find garages or other suitable parking, just so they could finally get back to the pharmacy and get in and out of it. I sent everyone a letter that was signed by five of us retailers on our particular block. That was the Haberdashery, Carden's Jeweler, Sue at Chuck's Barbershop, and the Boost Mobile folks along with myself. And we all agreed that we're definitely supportive of the restaurants at this time, but if you could please amend the end period from November to, at which point the governor lifts restrictions on indoor dining. I think in the future, we would love to be part of a scenario where we would have permanently expanded cafe or dining area on Main Street. I think people really liked having less travel lanes that made it a quieter atmosphere, less traffic somewhat. And that would be a great way to build out downtown Nashville with our new performing arts studio. And I think if we cut down on travel lanes, expanded the sidewalk, you would create very large areas for dining, and you would still allow on-street parking access for the retailers. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment? Not seeing anyone. We're going to move on. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding the multi-year contract award, three-year software maintenance for Logic Monitor.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and approve the three-year renewal required for the continued operation of a lock monitor in the amount of $4,860 annually for three years for a total of $14,580. Funding will be through Department Number 122, Information Technology Fund, General Fund, Software Maintenance, prior to year encumbrance, and I would like this motion by roll call.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jevie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeses and zero noes.
And that motion carries. Petitions.
There were none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
None.
Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 22nd, 2021 Budget Review Committee to be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 14th, 2021 Committee on Infrastructure, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 1st, 2021 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee, accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 3rd, 2021 Finance Committee, be accepted and placed on file. And there being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 4th, 2021 Planning and Economic Development Committee, be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of Board of Aldermen appointments.
Citizens Advisory Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Jennifer Bishop Saucier, 359B Main Street, Nashville, to the Citizens Advisory Commission with a term to expire October 1st, 2023. Is Jennifer with us this evening? Okay, she will be sworn in at a later date.
Conservation Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the following appointments to the Conservation Commission from alternate to member position Carol Sarno, 15 Rocky Hill Road, Nashville, and new-appointed alternate Jedediah Crook, 5252 King Street, Nashville, both with terms to expire December 31st, 2023. Do we have Carol and Jed with us this evening?
Carol is here.
Good evening, and Jed, I see you're here. I'm going to have the Corporation Counsel administer the ultimatum of office.
Would you each raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as member and alternate member of the Conservation Commission of the City of Nashville, according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the Constitution and laws of the State of New Hampshire and the rules and regulations of the city charter, so help you God?
Thank you both very much, and congratulations. Thank you for serving. Appreciate it. Okay, unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R21115, approving the cost items of sidebar agreements between the National Police Commission and the National Police Patrolmen's Association and the National Police Commission and the National Police Supervisors Association regarding military leaves of absence.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R21115 by roll call, like to speak to it.
Alderman Dow.
Yes, this is a sidebar agreement with a contract to allow the handling of, when a police officer gets called to serve in the military, and it's very similar to one that is present in the contract for the fireman.
Any discussion on the motion for final passage? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cleve.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes, sorry, sticky button.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jevie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have 15 yeses and zero noes.
That motion carries. Resolution 21-115 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R21116, establishing an expendable trust fund for appropriations for the Business and Industrial Development Authority.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R21-116 by roll call, and I'd like to speak to my resolution.
Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you. The mayor was talking earlier about when the Business Industrial Development Authority had first started this project, the Bridge Street Waterfront Development Preferred Development Agreement for sale of land in private development was dated May 21, 2009. That's how long they have been working on building out this corner of Nashua. I just want to say, I've been working with them for a couple of terms, and I know that now they've finished that project, they are ready to get started on something new. So I hope everyone will join me in accepting this resolution. Thank you.
Anyone else? Motion is for final passage of Resolution 21116. Alderman Jevie.
Thank you, Madam President. So we had a discussion about this at the Budget Review Committee meeting, and I reminded my fellow committee members that that this project, this is so-called Renaissance Apartments, I think, is, I'm not sure exactly the name, but it's the area along Bridge Street, you know, between the river and and you know, the Amory Street area or Sanders Street area. And originally, the developer anticipated being able to acquire some additional land owned by another landowner, and that deal never came through. So the developer felt that in order to make this whole project viable for its purposes, they needed to be able to develop additional housing and be able to sell more, either sell or rent more units. And originally, there's a lot that used to be owned by John Mansville that is on the corner of Bridge and Sanders Streets. Originally, the developer was going to develop that as a recreational lot, or you know, maybe a soccer field or something similar. And when he couldn't acquire the additional land that he anticipated, you know, a proposal was made to acquire that land and land across Sanders Street that was owned by the city and to be able to build additional housing on those parcels. And part of the agreement was that the developer would pay the city $775,000 in lieu of developing that athletic field. So when this was brought before us, you know, this change in the plan was brought before us, you know, it was made clear, I thought, that the money, the $775,000 would be used to either provide, you know, some additional recreational facilities in that area. You know, there's a lot of development occurring and being planned in that area, so there's a lot more units, a lot more people are going to be there. people are going to be there. And the need for recreation is is going to continue. So so now, the, you know, this resolution, which is primarily to establish an expendable trust fund to provide funds to the Business and Industrial Development Authority for future development, you know, is is fine, but it has an additional paragraph saying that it is the intention of this board that after closing two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the sale of land on Bridge Street and Sanders Street will be appropriated into this expendable trust fund via a supplemental appropriation resolution. Now, during the committee hearing, you know, I thought it was clear that, you know, the primary purpose is to establish this expendable trust fund, and it was stated that the you know, designating the two hundred and fifty thousand from this, the sale of this land was not binding. It was just just to identify some source of funds that the exact source of funds and the exact amount would be subject to further resolution. But I I felt that that the, you know, designated, you know, you know, taking two hundred and fifty thousand from the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand is contrary to what the intention was, that that money be used for recreational purposes. I happened to notice that the Capital Improvements Committee just came out with a report, and one of their, one of their priorities in the A listing is is developing is expressing the need for additional soccer fields, or at least time on soccer fields, and they've designated a project at Mine Falls, the soccer fields at Mine Falls, converting them to from a natural surface to an artificial surface, which would enable those fields to withstand much more intensive use, and perhaps put up lights that would allow nighttime use. And coincidentally, that the price tag on that project is seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And I've talked to the mayor about this, and and he said that that the seven hundred and seventy thousand is probably low, they probably need more money than that, but the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand from this sale of the Sanders Street, Bridge Street Sanders Street lot, we would you know, we would go a long way in in paying for that that project, which has been identified as a priority by the Capital Improvements Committee. So during the committee hearing, it was expressed by several people that that this two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, was just you know, fulfilled a requirement that in order to establish an expendable trust fund, we had to identify the the intended source of the of the funding. It's not binding, but we had to at least identify the possible source of it. Since that meeting, the the legal department and Attorney Bolton can confirm this. The legal department confirmed that, in fact, that is not necessary to establish this expendable trust fund. We don't have to identify the possible source of the funding. How much the funding will be and where it will come from is, you know, subject to determination by, you know, future resolution, ideally part of the budget process. So the legal department advised me that removing that that second paragraph, which identifies the the, you know, states that two hundred and fifty thousand would come from the sale of this Bridge Street Sanders Street lot, is not, in fact, necessary. So you know, we can, we can establish the expendable trust fund without you know, without endangering the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is was intended for recreational purposes. So I would like to make a motion that that second paragraph in the resolution be struck so that the resolution would not contain that second paragraph, it would just contain the authorization for the expendable trust fund. And through you, Madam President, I'd like to ask Attorney Bolton, you know, whether or not what I've said is true about the not being necessary to have that identified in this resolution.
Attorney Bolton.
Yeah, that that's entirely accurate, there's no there's no need for that second paragraph as far as legal requirements go. It can be left in, or it can be taken out as the board wishes.
Thank you. Attorney Jettie, I mean, Alderman Jettie, you all set?
I I am, so so I I've, is it clear that I've made the motion to strike that second paragraph? Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Thank you. So I want to begin by saying I appreciate Alderman Jettie bringing this up. It was a specific priority of the soccer community. They were looking forward to that original field space, and it is unfortunate that the Renaissance Downtown program, you know, downtown being used loosely here as their their project basically redefines where downtown extends to, has has been scaled down over the years. They brought a lot, a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of interest from different members of the community through their visualize Nashua programming, and that that has yielded a lot of really good development in the city that the original organization holding basically, you know, hearings had nothing to do with things like positive street art, Nash Area Kayak Exploration Destination, Row, New Hampshire, those are all programs where people went to participate in the data gathering process that Renaissance Downtown was holding. Renaissance Downtown elicited all this excitement about the opportunities that their their project was going to have, there was a whole riverfront promenade being planned and shops and all this kind of stuff, and it was very, very, it engendered a lot of passion, but I mean, as we discussed in the committee meeting last year, a lot of that's not happening. And where we were at last time was they were having trouble making the project viable because they didn't have enough square footage to squeeze all the buildings that they needed on there. And the concerns that were brought up at the committee were that, well, if you take away all the green space and you just stack a bunch of buildings in there, you're creating another problem for the city, where the city is going to need to come up with something to do. There is in that area a park being planned as part of the rearranging and reorganizing of the city or of the streets to allow for the increased traffic flow. But that doesn't help the soccer community, and soccer is is one of those priorities that just keeps falling by the wayside for our city, we keep losing opportunities. We don't have any kind of indoor soccer field, we don't have a stadium or anything like that, and it's the sport that's growing. So that was a lot of what we talked about at the meeting, and I appreciate Alderman Jettie bringing it up. I don't know exactly how well it will be received installing an artificial turf and lights in Mine Falls, so I would love to have the Minefall Advisory Board's opinion on that before we get too focused on that. But I do think that the general idea of ensuring that money that comes out of the sacrifice of that property does go back into the populations that had to, you know, essentially see another amenity passed up is important, I think we do need to figure out more places to put soccer fields. I think we do need to ensure that with all the development we're doing, and I appreciate the mayor focusing so much on housing, making sure that we're also providing quality there. Because if kids are going to grow up in that area, or adults are going to need to blow off steam, then we need to have healthy ways for them to do it. And if it's going to be considered part of, you know, Nashville's future downtown, needs to look like a future downtown and not just, you know, tenement housing. So I'm glad to see, as Alderman Schmidt brought up, the the project arcing towards completion after its eleven-year history. And I think Alderman Jettie does bring up a great point in in putting forward this amendment. And I would like to explore further how we directly apply that in a way that is most responsible to taxpayers.
Thank you, anyone else? On the motion to amend, Alderman O'Brien.
I do have a, just on the the question, is this just taking questions on the amendment right now?
No.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. I would just like to say that although I would like to go and support the soccer community, which I do, and I'll support this, I was never, from the very beginning, very comfortable with soccer fields over a particular brownfield, I know it's very limited, but John Mansfield did manufacture asbestos, there is asbestos on site, it is a brownfield. And I know in Ward Nine, we do have some areas that are encapsulated, that is taken care of, and we do have to maintain that. So I would, I'm glad we are avoiding putting a a field where children would use over a brownfield. But I would also want to do diligence and say, when we're looking at money such as this, everybody in the city, all your wards, park and recreation, has taken care of your individual parks. There is one remaining, and that's St. Andrews Field in Ward Nine. And I'm sure I share the stage with my fellow compadre from Ward Nine, Representative Harriet Gathright, that I do hope as we move on in the future that we do not forget St. Andrews Field, the one and the only remaining park that has not been rejuvenated, so thank you, Madam President.
And I agree, because when Nick left.
All right, one at a time, please.
Sorry.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank, thank you, Madam President, I have a couple of questions through you to Corporation Council, if I might.
Sure.
My first question is, does leaving, so on this question, if we were to leave the paragraph that we're being asked to strike in to the resolution, does that somehow tie that money up, or does it somehow fund this account in any way?
No, it's just a mere statement of what might happen in the future, what you intend to happen in the future at this moment in time, but that could change as as the will of the board changes. So it's completely non-binding.
And so if I could follow up, so that means that we do not have to remove this paragraph, in other words, to ensure that the seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that's being discussed, you know, that money is not in jeopardy, in other words, whether or not we take this money out or take this paragraph out or not.
And take it out, you can leave it in. As a practical matter, it has no impact at all.
Thank you, it's a moot point, I appreciate it, thank you.
Alderman Gathright. No, okay. All right. Anyone else?
Yes, yes. Thank you. Through you to Corporation Council. At the last meeting that this was discussed, I I wonder if there's something about opening an expendable trust bond, I believe that's what this is, and leaving it unfunded that is prohibited. I mean, is there, if we establish this, is there a timeframe in which it must be funded in some way?
No.
Okay. All right, so, okay, that whole thing was irrelevant. So the the only thing, thank you for that answer. My only feeling, I, you know, I what Alderman Jettie is saying makes sense to me, I, I mean, I, and I just, I, doesn't seem I don't know why we would leave something in there just so that we don't have to bother taking it out. I mean, it should reflect our intentions. So, you know, if you want to leave it in there, I mean, if we do choose to leave it in there, then to anyone watching, it 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 will send a message that that is our intention. And so I think that whatever the the board's intent intention is should be reflected in our decision whether or not to eliminate, thank you.
Anyone else? So we have a motion to amend by striking the second paragraph from Resolution twenty-one one sixteen. Is there discussion on that? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll on the amendment?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemens.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
No.
Alderman Lars.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulsia.
Yes.
You have twelve yeas and three nays.
And that motion carries. Motion before us now is Alderman Schmidt.
That would be to pass with the amendments, the final passage of R twenty-one one one eight by roll call.
One one six.
Oh, sorry.
The motion is for final passages amended, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Lars.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Mulsia.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries Resolution twenty-one one sixteen, is declared duly adopted as amended. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance oh twenty-one forty-five, amending the building construction ordinances and increasing the building department fees.
Alderman Cleaver.
Thank you, Madam President, I move for final passage of oh twenty-one dash zero four five by roll call. Increasing building fees, building department fees.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance twenty-one forty-five, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries. Ordinance 21-45 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance 02146, changing the starting time of regular meetings of Board of Aldermen.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for indefinite postponement of 021046.
Motion is for indefinite postponement of ordinance 2146 by roll call?
By roll call, please.
Thank you. Anyone? No?
I do have a question.
Alderman Lou?
Thank you. So whether we indefinitely postpone or we vote to nay, if the nay wins, or rather whether we take a vote and it loses and it does not pass, or if we move for an indefinite postponement and that passes, in either case, the, the prohibition against bringing up again is only for this session of our board. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Well, no.
Well, no, okay.
If a motion were made for passage and it failed, the resolution would still be before the board. It could be amended, it could be tabled, it could be referred to committee. Or it could then be indefinitely postponed or rejected. If a motion to reject it were to pass, it would be rejected. And then for the remainder of this term, your rules say the same resolution cannot be reintroduced. That is also true if the motion were to indefinitely postpone. If that were to pass, your rules would prohibit the same resolution from being, being reintroduced this term. Now, what is the same is largely flexible and within the board's control. So if it gets indefinitely postponed this evening and someone at some later time wants to change it to 7:02 as a starting time, presumably that could be introduced.
Thank you. I apologize. I know that this has been discussed and I didn't remember that, that fine detail. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion before us is for indefinite postponement. Further discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll? Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Karen?
Yeah.
Alderman Clemmons?
No.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Alderman Lou?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt?
Yes.
Alderman Laws?
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver?
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
You have 14 yeas and one nay.
That motion carries and ordinance 2146 is declared indefinitely postponed.
Second reading of ordinance 2147, temporarily changing the downtown improvements funding plan.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of ordinance 2147 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Jettie?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'm, I'm a little I'm a little uncomfortable with this. And I'll, I'll explain why. You know, our we're, we've been told many times by, by the mayor that that our budget for this coming year is going to be very, very difficult. You know, we've, you know, we're we're level funding all of the departments except, you know, the schools are being allowed a very small increase. And I'm sure you all realize that you know, we've approved employment contracts or union contracts that you know, allow for employees to get raises, deservedly so, some more than others, but but those are in effect. So all of these departments, all of our departments are going to have to find ways in, in, you know, their budgets, their payroll budgets are going up. And so that means so level funding means, you know, they can't propose a budget, you know, increase more than what they, what they were, what we allowed them for last year for this current year. So they have to find ways in order to meet their obligations, to satisfy the, the amount that they have to pay employees. They're going to have to, they have to look at where they can make other, you know, where they can cut in other places. So it's a very, very difficult thing. And we on the the Budget Review Committee at first and then, you know, the, the full board. You know, we're going to have to make some very tough decisions about, you know, how we're going to be able to to, to come up with this budget for next year. So you know, the, you know, this proposal made by Alderman Clemmons, I, I think, you know, has good intentions. You know, because the, the Downtown Improvements Committee is funded by a, you know, a surplus of funds from revenue from the parking department. And last year, because of COVID, fewer people coming downtown to park, also because of the barriers that we put up, there were fewer metered parking spaces to, to, to gather revenue. So the, you know, the, the amount that the, the excess amount that funds the Downtown Improvement Committee, you know, we, we never got high enough to, to, to give them, you know, that, that surplus. So Alderman Clemmons is concerned about the Downtown Improvement Committee having a, you know, a source of funds to, to do the, you know, the work that it, that it does. Now during the, the committee meeting, the people from the Downtown Improvement Committee, you know, told us that they have, I, I think it was $174,000 in their, in the bank, in their, in their in their budget that's available to them. And as the ordinance reads, I, I think it's clear that, you know, they can't spend money without approval of the, the mayor and the Board of Aldermen. But they've got 174,000 there. So it's not like they have nothing. And, you know, be, because of COVID, you know, you know, some of the programs that they normally sponsor didn't occur. And so I, I know that Alderman Clemmons wants to make sure that when, when, when the COVID crisis passes and the restrictions are lifted, that the, you know, that they'll be, that we'll, you know, the downtown will be able to, to get up and running as soon as possible and, and as, as well as possible. And, and I appreciate that. But what we are doing, I think, the more I thought about this, I realize, at least in my opinion, what we're doing is we are we are dedicating $100,000 from the budget, not, this isn't coming from excess parking revenue. You know, if, if we do have excess parking revenue, you know, it'll help, you know, help us afford to pay this, but if we don't, it's 100,000 that we're going to have to find somewhere else in the budget. And I'm, I'm, you know, as, as much as I support the Downtown Improvements Committee, you know, we, we've, we've been spending a lot of money on downtown. And, and I'm thinking about all of the other things that are going to be competing for scarce resources for this coming budget year. And I think personally, I think that it is, it would be better for us to, as we go through the budget review process, you know, that you know, there are a lot of worthwhile projects. Downtown is one of them. But there are a lot of others that are also competing with, with those limited funds. And as we look at the budget, as we make decisions about what we're going to fund and what we're not going to fund, I, I think everybody ought to be competing on a level playing field. And I don't think that, you know, we ought to be taking 100,000 out of, you know, out of context and, and dedicating it to the Downtown Improvement Committee. And, you know, and, and then, and then we have to, you know, cut something else, somewhere else. I think, you know, all of these projects ought to be on a level playing field. They ought to compete fairly. And, you know, if we decide, yes, we need to spend 100,000 on the Downtown Improvement Committee, we, we can, we can do that. But if we decide we, we can't afford it this year, you know, we can, we can, we can decide not to do that. So I'm, I'm in the uncomfortable position of, of saying that we, you know, that we're, we're I think we're, we're, we're ahead of the game here. We're, we're, we're making a decision about you know, allocating money from, money from next year's budget without considering all the other things that may need it. So for, for those reasons, I'm going to vote against this.
Okay, Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. So I actually agree with what Alderman Jettie was just saying, which is the reason why the ordinance is written, so that it doesn't take any money from this year's budget. It takes money from the 2022 budget of July that year. What this ordinance does is it takes a calculated sum of $100,000 in parking new, parking revenue. And it puts that as an earmark towards the budget in 2022, not the budget that is coming up in this July. So the reason for that being is that because the Downtown Improvement Committee does have a substantial sum in there, my hope is that we can get to do some of the festivals and things, especially with, in light of the fact that the that the vaccine rollout is going much faster than expected. And the CDC is, is probably going to update guidelines to say that, you know, once most people are vaccinated, we'll be able to resume life as, as it was. At least that's the hope anyway. I hope we can get there. So that being said, there's some opportunities there, hopefully this summer and certainly in the fall, to do things like the, you know, the holiday stroll and some other music festivals and things like that. That they, and the Downtown Improvement Committee has plenty of money in there to do those things right now. So we don't need to fund the Downtown Improvement Committee this year because the, they do have a substantial sum and they were able to save that money by not being able to do those things last year. So with that being said, the goal here is to ensure that we're putting out the barriers, at least I assume we're going to do that. That parking revenue is going to be reduced again this year. So looking ahead into the future, knowing that this parking revenue is going to be reduced. This is basically forecasting that out and making sure that the allocation will be there for the 2022 budget. And I did have a conversation with the mayor about this. He, he did indicate his support for it as well as the co-sponsors on the legislation. And I think it's a, it's a prudent move on our part to, to ensure that regardless of what happens this year, we're, we will make sure that in the 2022 budget, there'll be money for the Downtown Improvement Committee. And then going forward, as also part of this is the parking study, which has been mentioned before. Director Cummings is going to put into the parking study a plan to ensure that the, looking at the barriers and how a reduced lane Main Street, a two-way Main Street, if you will, one, one in each direction, might have on parking. So what that's, what that will do is enable us to look at do we need to adjust the parking revenue in 2022? And the way that we collect parking money, we can study the fact that is this the best way going forward? If we're going to continue to reduce the lanes on Main Street, maybe even make that a permanent thing someday, how are we going to recapture the money that the Downtown Improvement Committee gets traditionally? So we'll be able to study that between now and really 2023 and get a plan in place that will then produce, hopefully, a new way of the Downtown Improvement Committee getting funding. And, you know, so it's, this is, this is just the start of a, of a new, a new downtown and a new way to approach how we're going to fund this committee. But essentially what it does is it just makes sure that, that that funding source is going to be there in July of 2022. So I'm happy to take other questions, but I, I do hope that I can get the support of my colleagues. So, thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
I have a question for Attorney Bolton, if I can ask to the if we've had this and we think it's a good idea now and then things start to look not so good next year, say in February or January, can we unpass it?
You can introduce another ordinance to change the numbers, delete the numbers, decrease, increase, develop a whole new formula.
Put it on a different
It remains, it remains within the board's ability to adjust.
Okay. Then, I mean, for my part as, you know, Alderman of Ward four and definitely a, a utilizer of the downtown support services, I see what Alderman Clemmons is trying to do. I appreciate what Alderman Jettie is bringing up. And I think it's important that we don't necessarily earmark special projects when we know we're going to have to make some difficult decisions as Aldermen coming up. But this doesn't sound like that's, this is, that's doing it. It sounds like we are presenting faith in our downtown. We are giving them a little bit of courage, I guess, to be able to invest a little bit more readily and aggressively in the events and activities as it becomes safe for them to do so. And I think that's going to be very important for Um, and I think that's going to be very important for Nashua's, um, morale. I think a lot of times people look at the downtown area as, um, competing in, in need, uh, with other areas of the city. Maybe, I mean, it is our storefront, it's, it's where people see Nashua as the center of, of Nashua, that's what a downtown is. And I would say in practice, no, not everybody downtown is living, living riches, we have some of the forest sensors, census tracts in the, this, the country, uh, adjacent to downtown. So there's definitely benefit in investing in that area for the people living in that area and for the businesses, uh, that basically telegraph to the rest of the, um, region, whether it's good to do business in Nashua or not. So, um, I think I'm going to support, uh, Alderman Clemens', uh, motion, uh, while expressing appreciation for Alderman Jettie.
Anyone else? Alderman Clay.
Uh, thank you, um, Madam Chairwoman. I, um, I'm going to echo what, uh, Alderman, uh, Lopez said. Um, I don't truly disagree with what, um, Alderman Jettie said, but one of the things that we've been trying to do is bolster the downtown and we've been doing a lot of different projects to it. And I'm a firm believer that our downtown is the heart of our city. Um, it is not all of the city, but it is the heart of the city. And so I do agree with, um, Alderman Clemens, putting it off to the two thousand and twenty-two and to the, towards the end there and making sure that we, we have this and knowing that we can change it if we want to. I think it's a good idea to have this intent. Um, the downtown improvement committee has, um, supported different types of ideas that have come up, um, at the last moment when the city doesn't have to necessarily put money out for it. They've been there to support downtown, they don't just make it look pretty. They're there to, to help, um, and they have been so supportive to businesses, to everything else like that, that I think we need to show our support. And yes, um, whether we're going to pass this or not with the, um, the, the barriers or whether we're going to do this as a, a future endeavor every year, it's something that we know is going to be hitting those parking meters. So I think we need to have some sort of alternative plan. And if we don't need it at the last minute, so I too will be supporting, um, this. And, and I have been supporting this ordinance as a, as a co-sponsor. I think it's a good idea and it's well-planning for the future. Thank you.
Anyone else? Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I too, I appreciate the comments and, uh, well-thought process of Alderman Jettie. But I am also very proud to, uh, sponsor this bill with Alderman Clemens and of course, I'm definitely going to support it. I want to remember, uh, have the public remember exactly next Tuesday is when the governor came out with his proclamation that basically shut down the United States to some degree because of COVID. Uh, we took very radical measures. The thing is, look what we did as far as, uh, putting the barriers up and extenuating the, uh, uh, outside dining to meet the safety needs, yet trying to do something to keep our businesses downtown uh, vibrant. And it has worked. It has worked. Uh, I think every single Alderman should take their hand and stretch it out and pat themselves on the back. We did a very good job with that. We even beat Manchester, which sometimes can be difficult, but anytime we could pull the wool over those guys, I like it, you know? But the thing is, it's the radical thinking or the out-of-the-box thinking that has been done by this board. And although I, you know, take into account Alderman Jettie's, I am a proud sponsor. I hope everybody passes this, uh, because this is part of the piece of the puzzle to help us get through to two thousand and twenty-two. Two thousand and twenty, I'm writing off the books. Twenty-one, let's get by this, folks. And let's march on and try to make the city better. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Alderman, Alderman Lou.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, maybe, uh, I think that Alderman Laws is the liaison with the downtown improvement committee. I wonder if he or, uh, Alderman Clemens can tell us how much typically, um, the, uh, downtown improvement committee, uh, you know, get into their call for, per year under ordinary circumstances?
Alderman Clemens.
Yeah, um, I would say I don't have the exact figure, but on average, it's about a hundred thousand dollars. In years past, um, there has been, um, you know, it's been as low as sixty thousand, i- in other years, it's been as high as a hundred and forty thousand. Depends on how much traffic there is downtown and, and, and that kind of thing. Um, and how much revenue we're collecting. So I, 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 but I don't have an answer to that. Maybe, uh, Alderman or Alderwoman Kelly does, because I see her hands up, but, uh, but it's approximately a hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you. Um, I had a follow-up, but if Alderwoman Kelly has, um, an answer to that question, I, I don't know, um, or I'll just finish my follow-up.
What is your follow-up? I don't have an answer.
Thank you.
I have another question.
Okay, um. If, if we were, uh, if we were an organization that was printing money like, uh, the federal government, then I could understand, um, us trying to be supportive, uh, in this time, but we're working, all we're doing is, is is adjusting to reduce revenues, um, all around and increase costs and, um, it seems to me that the, the downtown improvement committee has a good chunk of money there and rather than go ahead and say, let's decide what's going to happen in two thousand and twenty-two now. Um, I, I, I agree with, uh, Alderman Jettie that, um, I, I don't feel it's my place to be, um, choosing the winners and the losers and, um, these are taxpayers who, whose money this is. And I, I think that, um, you know, I, I don't think I can support this. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Um, it's funny that Alderman Clemens thought I had the answer when I actually was going to ask another question. Because I believe actually this committee is, you know, the result of a, uh, committee that, um, Alderman Clemens put together a number of years ago. Um, my question was actually, um, I've only really been tangentially involved in sort of what happens with the downtown improvement committee. I do appreciate all the people who are on that committee and the work that they do in the downtown. I'm a downtown business owner myself. Um, but I was just interested in if anyone, anyone on the board, um, has kind of a tick list of some of the things that they have, um, invested in, um, over the years with, with this money.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you. Yeah, I can let you know, um, so basically they've done all of these, um, they have funded all of the studies for the Performing Arts Center. Um, they have done the, um, pay-in displays. Um, we've done, trying to think what the downtown improvement committee, over the years, um, several festivals, um, that have occurred, um, some of them on a recurring basis, put money towards the, um, uh, what, what is it? The holiday stroll, um, in years, and I'm trying to think, um, but, uh, a lot, and I think they want to do the traffic, I think they want to do the, the lights this year to see if we can um, reconfigure the lights on, uh, on Main Street. So those are, you know, those are some of the things that get done. I know quite a bit of the money for the sidewalk improvements went into, went, uh, from the committee. Um, so, you know, it's been things like that, um, in, between infrastructure projects and events um, that have been really the, what has, um, that money's been spent on over the years.
If I could follow up, please.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for that, Alderman Clemens. I thought it would just be a good, uh, thing for everyone to kind of hear what they've been up to. I, I think sometimes that gets fallen by the wayside. Um, I'm going to support this. Obviously, I think that, you know, our downtown is, is really becoming quite a draw. And I think, you know, our, uh, Performing Arts Center has started, if you go downtown, not everybody's downtown every, um, every day like I am, but you're starting to see that. And I think, um, the work that we did last summer with the expanded dining really just started to make Nashua, um, a place that people wanted to come and be outside. I'm really excited about the Jersey barriers, so, um, I'm, I'm grateful for everybody who's kind of working together to, um, improve sort of everything that's happening in our downtown. So, um, thanks for bringing us forward.
Alderman Clay.
Uh, thank you, Madam, uh, President. Thank you for allowing me to speak again. If I'm not mistaken, um, the downtown improvement committee um, funds a little bit beyond the, the Main Street of downtown. I believe that they are also assisting in the, um, um, the dog park feasibility study that, um, off of, off, off Mind Falls area right there. And that's to help the, the people who are living downtown as well as, um, the city in, in general. Um, you know, whether this goes through, I, I believe it will, I'm, I'm, uh, alternate on the ad pack, um, Alderman Lopez is the actual prime person on that, but it, it's a good project for the, the city. So they think outside of, of directly on Main Street and, um, I think it's, they do a lot of good for the, for the city and I think we need to keep them in mind. So I see that Alderman Lopez un, unmuted himself, so he probably wants to add.
Anyone else? Alderman Lopez.
I felt like there's a way to be called on, sorry. Um, so, uh, I mean, for me, the biggest thing that downtown improvement committee does that makes an impact um, in terms of improvement is they, they do the Christmas lights every year. Um, and then, uh, they also do the, um, storefront, um, decoration for, uh, what would be empty abandoned storefronts so that downtown has some continuity to it and some, um, some character. I, with respect to what, uh, Alderman O'Brien said earlier, I cannot pat myself on the back for how we've done because I sprained my back. But, um, I do think that, um, we should continue the trend of seeing how things are unfolding down the road and trying to be proactive in saying, okay, look, we need to be adaptable to this and we need to recognize where there's opportunities and where there's threats. And I think this is an opportunity because we do need to make sure that we are resolving the threat of COVID nineteen and that public health is getting the support that it needs. And even this, you know, upcoming, uh, St. Patrick's Day, where this downtown, um, parking and, um, outdoor dining and everything, the reason we've, we're redefining what downtown looks like in the first place is because there was a threat, but there's also opportunity to see how we can make downtown more vibrant and more effective and, and turning things like, uh, like a, a global disaster into an opportunity for people to celebrate safely and, and enrich and enliven, uh, businesses, I think is a great policy. Um, I understand the concept of printing money and, and using tax money, uh, payer money wisely, um, have some misgivings about how they do that at the federal level too, but you can't print money and be misusing tax money, like either there is the money there to spend or there isn't. In this particular case, this is making a plan. It is a plan that we can modify or change prior to our next, you know, budget season if we need to. But it is making that plan and that commitment so that when downtown does start to move towards reopening and when people are going to be having to make some last-minute investments in those events, because you're not going to have the normal planning timeframe for some of these events, we're very much going to want to be ready to go. This is a way of, of putting the resources we have on the table for this year by ensuring that we will continue to make it a priority next year. So I, I see nothing but strengths in all of this. And, uh, I think if we don't move forward on this, we're going to regret the opportunities we're missing.
Is there anyone else?
Madam President.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you, I'll be very brief. Uh, I just also wanted to point out that while I was the liaison to the downtown improvements committee, they, the wonderful wayfinding package, the signage that we have downtown and then all of the permanent uplighting that's on Main Street right now, we're, we're big projects. And then the, uh, the signage that goes on the light posts on the Broad Street Parkway and down Main Street. I just wanted to give them credit for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Laws. Anyone else? Seeing none, no one? Would the clerk please call the roll? The motion is for final passage of ordinance twenty-one forty-seven.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wushia.
Yes.
You have thirteen aces and two nays.
That motion carries and ordinance twenty-one dash forty-seven is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance oh twenty-one forty-eight. Amending the residential district ordinance with respect to residential driveways.
Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a, uh, motion to amend oh twenty-one oh forty-eight by replacing it with a golden rod copy of the amendments made at the Planning and Economic Development Committee, uh, by roll call. And, Madam President, I'm happy to explain the, uh, amendments that were being made.
Please do.
Thank you. Um, Madam President, the, the overall purpose of the, this ordinance is to, uh, basically clarify and, um, consolidate some of the different provisions regarding, uh, driveways, uh, from various different parts of the land use code uh, and the DPW, uh, code that they use, uh, which is what it does. In, in doing that and putting this together, there was one paragraph, uh, paragraph four of the original ordinance which, uh, dealt with, uh, the, basically the ends of the driveways and how they were going to be uh, measured. Uh, it appeared that there was some conflicting information between the different areas, uh, as to, uh, ho- how that should be handled. Uh, so rather than try to, um, explain it all in this ordinance, uh, paragraph four, uh, has just been stricken, uh, in the rest of the, uh, the rest of the provisions of uh, the ordinance have remained the same.
Thank you, Alderman Tenza. Motion is to amend resolution twenty-one forty-eight by replacing it with the golden rod copy of amendments made at the P E D C committee by roll call. Any further discussion on that? Motion to amend. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wushia.
Yes.
You have fifteen aces and zero nays.
And that motion carries. Alderman Tenza.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd make a motion for final passage of zero twenty-one zero four-eight as amended by roll call.
Motion is for final passage as amended. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wushia.
Yes.
You have fifteen aces and zero nays.
And that motion carries, ordinance twenty-one dash forty-eight is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of ordinance oh twenty-one forty-nine, amending the conservation subdivisions supplemental use regulations.
Alderman Laws.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, I move for final passage of oh twenty-one forty-nine by roll call.
Motion is for final passage of ordinance twenty-one forty-nine by roll call. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jenny.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gathright.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
You have fifteen yes and zero nays.
That motion carries and ordinance 2149 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of ordinance oh 2150, relative to temporary road closures and elimination of certain on-street parking for use by restaurants for outdoor dining in 2021.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to recommend final passage of oh 21050 by roll call.
Okay. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Lopez.
So Mr. Anderson did bring up a good point, and this is one that we had struggled with last year even. Wing Gates being a pharmacy during the day that needs people able to stop and pick up, you know, goods and that kind of thing, does struggle because the the parking barriers are have been arranged in a way that was difficult. I know that Director Cummings did work on that last year to try to make it a little bit more palatable for them. We have asked him to evaluate that plan additionally through all of the committee meetings that we've discussed. I know some other businesses have approached with concerns such as why not when they have to compete with the bank for two spaces? I mean, it would be really nice if people going to Santander Bank would park in the giant parking lot that it has, but they choose to park in front of why not and then not go in. So it is a struggle for businesses downtown when they they lose their their convenience parking. I do think there is some merit in looking at the timeframe for implementation because I think we were using the same model as last year where we were making sure that, you know, there was maximum exposure for outdoor dining so that that would be the most safety. But I mean, the vaccinations, as long as people continue moving forward with them and taking them as much as possible, as long as we build our herd immunity, as long as people make responsible decisions with the upcoming holidays, we can keep our numbers low, we can keep our systems from being in danger of overwhelming, being overwhelmed. And we can, we can look at how we approach this throughout the summer. We do still have the ability to change those kind of dates within a reasonable amount of time based on the contract. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that those concerns are heard and that we're not just throwing away the commercial businesses in favor of the restaurant ones. Just there's a lot of need in the area and we kind of have to figure out how how that plan is going to work out.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez. Anyone else? Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. And again, I want to echo what Alderman Lopez just said. I think we do need to make sure that we are taking care of those businesses. And I know I've spoken to parking and so on about, well, can we put someone's name on a parking space? And that is against the rules. You can't designate city parking to any one particular household or person. We can't even put a permit up there and and say this is for this parking only. Not when it's when it's city parking. I I would hope that what Alderman Lopez brought up for places such as why not, that the residents will just go around the corner and for the bank and just park in that bank because the people from why not can't park in that private parking lot. They're not supposed to do that. So you know, I I hope that residents will be a little bit more considerate. I know they're probably not thinking when they're just running into the bank, they're figuring they're going in real quick and out. And this is a nice convenient parking spot and they're going to take it. But again, I also believe that Director Cummings will work as much as he possibly can to try to give them as much parking as possible. Maybe we just have to tweak it a little bit more, but I still think this is a worthwhile project and I will be voting for it.
Anyone else? Alderman Dow.
Yes, I talked to Director Cummings just a few couple hours ago, maybe three hours ago now. And he is going to be calling Wing Gates tomorrow and setting up a meeting with those shop owners in the area. And hopefully they'll have a resolution that they can all agree with, and I think we'll be fine.
Anyone else? Alderman Jenny.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, this, you know, I I think everyone or most people think that the you know, what we did last summer was, you know, was a great thing, you know, it was, you know, very helpful to the to the restaurants. I know a lot of people, I think it was an added bonus in that it provided us with a real time experiment on, you know, could we narrow Main Street? You know, could we provide for more sidewalk? You know, dining areas? You know, could we slow the traffic down, you know, with, you know, could we live with the idea of Main Street being a destination as opposed to a thoroughfare? Where you're trying to get from one end of of Main Street to the other as fast as possible? You know, the people who who use Main Street as a thoroughfare were very frustrated because it it took a lot longer to get from one end to the other, but I I think in many ways that's that's a good thing. So I, you know, generally speaking, I I think, you know, this is a good thing, but you know, you know, we have to be sensitive to, you know, the the area, you know, the merchants who are who are most affected by this, you know, we're doing this for them. And we ought to listen to them when they, you know, point out problems. And, you know, I haven't heard anyone say that we shouldn't do this at all. But I've heard a lot of people say, you know, that you know, you know, barriers should be in a different location than where they are. There are, you know, be some tweaking. You know, the next ordinance that we're going to be dealing with with the 15-minute free parking. You know, Mr. Anderson spoke about you know, how that affects him. He pointed out that, you know, the restaurants really don't get going until, you know, later in the afternoon and the evening. Whereas the the Main Street retail establishments, you know, are there during the day and and their customers can't you know, can't, you know, the parking's been eliminated in favor of the restaurants. And the restaurants are pretty much only using them at night. So, you know, I I think there is some some tweaking that can be done. And, you know, I attended a meeting a couple of weeks ago where downtown merchants were invited to express their opinion. And you know, a lot of people said to me that that they didn't know this meeting was happening. You know, Director Cummings, you know, I I think we've all experienced the fact that getting the word out is a very difficult thing. You know, we oftentimes, you know, I I think we fail in in letting people know that we're about to do something and giving them ample opportunity to to give us some feedback. But, you know, more particularly at that meeting, and I I know of not only Mr. Anderson, but I know other people who have talked to, tried to talk to, well, they have talked to Mr. Cummings about suggestions. And you know, he has said that that, you know, he welcomes their their input. But you know, this project, you know, is being put into place and you know, I I'm having difficulty understanding how we're going to be moving barriers around to improve situations. You know, once they're in place, are we going to be able to move them around? You know, during the during our committee hearing, the Infrastructure Committee, I think we were all, I shouldn't say that. I certainly was under the impression that that changes could be made, you know, by the Director Cummings and the mayor and the city engineer and fire department, police department, you know, that they could, you know, make changes, adjust, make some adjustments and stuff. And but I, when I look at the ordinance, the ordinance says that you know, that we're we're adopting the, you know, the barriers and the, you know, the parking restrictions and and, you know, changing the handicap parking and stuff according in accordance to the plan that's submitted with the ordinance. And the plan is basically an aerial aerial view of of Main Street and showing where the barriers are going to be put, where the parking is going to be. So that this ordinance adopts that plan. The ordinance goes on to say that upon the recommendation of the Director of Public Works and the Parking Manager, the mayor may approve additional road closures, elimination of on-street parking and creation of handicap spaces to accommodate outdoor dining locations. And I I you know, I hate, I hate to do this to Corporation Counsel, but it it I don't know if you can, if you have time. I tried to alert you to this earlier today, but I couldn't reach you. Does that, I don't know if you have time to look at it really quickly, but, you know, does that, we're we're some of us were under the impression that that this thing could be tweaked as we go along, that it was a work in process. But I look at this language and I'm seeing that, you know, the plan that you know, those aerial views showing where the barriers are, that's that's the plan, that's going into effect. And that the mayor can with the recommendation of the Director of Public Works and the Parking Manager, he can, he can provide for additional road closures and and eliminate additional parking spaces. But can he? Does this allow him to, does this allow the mayor to 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 change the barriers, change the location of the barriers, change the location of parking? You know, the parking areas? You know, if if this, if this is unfair to you, just say so. But through you, Madam President, could I ask Corporation Counsel that question? Or or do we need to to give the mayor some additional authority in this ordinance to make those changes as as this, as we experience? You know, as the summer goes on?
I think the short answer is I that that would be preferable. So maybe if you added a clause that said alternatively, on the recommendation of those same officials, the mayor may adjust the location of the barriers, 15-minute pickup parking spaces and location of handicap parking as circumstances warrant.
Madam President, could I follow up? Madam President?
Yes, I'm sorry, it's on mute. Sorry.
So would if if we amended this? So I don't if I don't know if you have it in front of you, where the paragraph that says, be it further resolved that upon recommendation of the Director of Public Works and the Parking Manager, the mayor may approve additional road closures, etc. If we struck approve additional, those two words, and replace them with adjust as necessary so that it would read upon the recommendation of the Director of Public Works and the Parking Manager, the mayor may adjust as necessary road closures, elimination of on-street parking and creation of handicap spaces to accommodate outdoor dining locations. Would that be an acceptable?
Well, I think you may want to talk about adjusting the location of the barriers themselves, adjusting the 15-minute parking spaces, adjusting the handicap parking spaces. You may have said some of that. I would leave out the words as necessary. I think you might want to say is as circumstances appear advisable or as circumstances appear to warrant. I'd hate to be somewhere arguing about whether it was necessary or whether it was just a good idea.
Okay, I I accept your recommendation. So Madam President, could I make a motion to adopt the the amendment that Attorney Bolton is proposing or Attorney Bolton? The wording that Attorney Bolton has proposed.
Yes, so the wording would be to adjust as circumstances warrant. Is that what you recommended? Attorney Bolton?
I would say the location of the barriers, handicap spaces and 15-minute free parking zones as circumstances appear to warrant.
Alderman Jenny.
Excuse me, Madam President. So Attorney Bolton, I would like to remind you that the next ordinance talks about the 15-minute free parking.
That isn't in this. If you think it's more appropriate to deal with it there, that's certainly a valid way to go.
And I just wanted to point out to you that there is a separate ordinance coming up. The next one that talks about the 15-minute parking.
So it's your pleasure, Alderman Jenny.
I I would like to move to amend in accordance with the language suggested by Attorney Bolton. And I think the, you know, as long as the it's, you know, it's it's clear we are adopting this this plan, but it does give the the mayor upon the recommendation of the Department of Public, the Director of Public Works and the Parking Manager, the ability to make adjustments.
Okay, you've heard the motion? Discussion. Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry, I think Alderman Lopez was first, so please let him go first and I I will come after.
Actually, Alderman O'Brien was first and then Alderman Lopez.
I go before you, you're just going to have to say I agree with him, so you should go first.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I know there was a little bit of a delay there. Thank you. The thing is here, as the Chairman of Infrastructure, let me kind of remind you what's going on. Since we're discussing about the Jenny amendment to this, at the very
At the very least, I would probably offer something else, the mayor of his designee, and if it's the mayor and/or his designee. Then that would make Director Cummings. To which Director Cummings has been dealing with this all along. So I don't see the absolute necessity to get the mayor in, but I want to make the Alderman. Aware of, there's a lot of concerns with this. Number one is whenever you put up barriers, you gotta re-institute or re-teach. The public to follow the proper traffic patterns. There is some barriers, as Alderman Jettie and all you may remember, that were kind of like bump outs. But they existed only to assist with the traffic pattern. But whenever you put barriers up on Main Street, we're not the city of Boston or the state of Massachusetts. We do not have like, I'm gonna date myself the Southeast Expressway. But we do not have the HOV barriers and these cannot be moved. As a matter of fact, I think in order to put the barriers out. I don't even think we get that great of assistance because we do not have the equipment. In-house within the Board of Public Works, so we have to pay a contractor to do so. And that was done last year, it was done in the installation and removal. And from what I understand from Director Cummings, it will be done as they are installed for this year. But that does not mean that certain issues that get brought up. Historically, the facts are. One of the gentlemen that did bring the concerns up. He was allotted a fifteen-minute parking space. But when his concerns were noted. There was a pushback to one of the restaurants. Adjacent to his property. And I think two spaces were granted. So this has been a very fluid type of thing in dealing with this. It comes down to, I basically guess, we're gonna have to make. A decision on it, it may not be popular with some. But is popular with the majority. And I think all of you have heard very positive things about the support. Particularly from our dining community, people that have enjoyed outdoor dining. And like I did mention before with the COVID, we're coming up to about basically one year of the restrictions. But let's look at Main Street. I don't see plywood shuttering up the windows. What we have done has worked. I haven't seen too many restaurants close, so it is good. I think Director Cummings, in his capability of his appointment and his station. Is quite capable of dealing with the individual people down on Main Street and tweaking. This type of thing, it is something very fluid, so. I would not be supporting the amendment as such because I think it's incapable of hands with the Director Cummings, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I, sorry, Alderman O'Brien, but I'm comfortable supporting the amendment. Just because I think it has been fluid and adaptable in the past, and so I don't see any harm in codifying it. I also think it would be. It's important to support all businesses and make sure that they don't feel like they're being subsumed. Under the more popular or, you know, visible businesses, so. Wingate Pharmacy is very important, they're a very historic business, they've been there for years. They have business needs and nobody knows their business needs as well as they do. So I think it's, we need to support businesses in a way that allows them to come forward with these issues. But I also think that the Board of Aldermen is a pretty clumsy tool for that. Pretty ponderous in terms of how quickly we can respond to some things. So it makes sense to me, the way it was presented, that yes, Director Cummings has the. Recommendation power, but also DPW, since they're probably gonna be the ones who move it. And they're probably gonna be the ones who have a whole bunch of construction coming up anyway. So I don't see that as particularly harmful. Would like to point out to Alderman Jettie that in the previous meeting, he was. Concerned with the absence of a map and this week he is concerned with the presence of a map. But thank you for being diligent.
Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President, and I hate to disappoint you, Alderman Lopez. But while I do agree with what you said, that was not gonna be my comment, my comment actually is for Alderman Jettie. I just, I understand, I think I understand with what you're, what you're saying. But could you specifically state again the paragraph and what the word changes are going to be, rather than just saying. What Attorney Bolton said, just so that we have it. For both the audience as well as the members who are voting, that we know exactly what is we're voting, so we don't have it in front of us.
My, Madam President?
Alderman Jettie.
I, I'd be happy to do that if I had it in front of me, but what I, what I had proposed. Attorney Bolton made some, some very good suggestions and so. You know, he is more able to. To repeat what it is that. Is that he said and I would, I would defer to him.
Attorney Bolton?
I've said it four times, four different ways, so we could try for five, I suppose. The upshot is. There's already language there that talks about on the recommendation. Of the Director of Public Works and the Parking Manager. The mayor will have further authority to close other streets and so forth. And I think in order to meet. Alderman Jettie's. Issue. That adding language. Saying, or upon such recommendation, the mayor can adjust locations. Of. Barriers. Parking spaces. And other installations as circumstances appear to warrant.
Madam, Madam President?
Alderman Clay.
I, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer and I, I see nothing wrong with what was just said. But I guess I don't see what the difference is from what's already written to what we're suggesting. And again, I don't disagree with it because I do agree that. We need to not bring every little minute detail to the Board of Aldermen and I want to make sure. But I thought this kind of already gave the approval of it. I, I, I'm fine voting for it, but I just don't see. The, the significant change in it and, and again, I'm not a lawyer, so maybe I'm just missing something.
Guess if I'm being asked right now, it allows for the mayor to make. Additional closings of streets to accommodate outdoor dining. I think what we're talking about now is relocating. Certain features. Not necessarily to, not necessarily to accommodate outdoor dining. But perhaps to accommodate convenient parking for other businesses.
May I ask a follow-up? Thank you, Madam President, so the way it reads now, it says approve additional road closures, does that mean that it would not allow? Them to make adjustments such as they, they did last year with the, the changes in front of Wingate or other ones? So as it reads now, they would not be able to make those adjustments, is that correct, without coming to the board, that is?
Correct.
Okay, then I absolutely agree with what Alderman Jettie is recommending. With this new adjustment, would that allow them to do additional road closures as well or no?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Yes. I, as far as the people that had concerns with the parking, as I, I thought I mentioned earlier. That Director Cummings is meeting with them tomorrow to try and resolve things. But the other thing involved is, when I was talking to Director Cummings, is. The traffic flow on Main Street is under the control of the DPW and Wayne Husband, who is the city's traffic manager. And the way the barriers are configured to flow the traffic is his call. And not the mayor or the Board of Aldermen's call at the current time anyway, unless, but. So my concern is, we're trying to get these out for March fifteenth. And I'd like to ask Attorney Bolton. If we change anything to this resolution, does it have to go back to the DPW for approval and then back to the Board of Aldermen? Because we'll be playing with this for a month.
No.
So there, there is limitations as to what we. Either the mayor or Director Cummings or anyone else can do without DPW blessing the traffic flow. So that's what they're gonna try and work out tomorrow. I don't see a need to change the, the ordinance right now because. Last year we were able to move things around and there was no big. Hell raising in downtown, the barriers removed and, and I think we can move selected barriers, I think we hire a company. Because we're dealing with such a large quantity of barriers. But, you know, I don't see the necessity to tweak this to. Try and get the resolution that, that probably is not gonna meet it anyway.
Alderman Clemmons.
Well, actually, I, I do see Alderwoman Kelly's had her hand up, I'd be happy to yield if.
Okay. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, so I'm gonna support this, I think that the intent here is to allow for flexibility. And I actually think last year, we had to approve an amendment to allow Tim to make, make some changes as they came up, if I remember correctly. So, I mean, I think the intent here is that the downtown is a, a fabric of different types of businesses. We're trying something for only the second summer and. We want to make sure that it, there's some flexibility for Director Cummings or the mayor to make adjustments. Much faster than bringing them to us every time a business has, has a request. So I think, you know, this is really in the spirit of. Allowing for some flexibility for something that's kind of new, but also allowing for a more responsive. Time for our businesses instead of saying, oh, well, we gotta bring it back to the Board of Aldermen, it'll be a month before we can even. Move that barrier for you.
Thank you, Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, yeah, I, I don't necessarily have any problem with language change, I just wish that. You know, it had come sooner because it is frustrating, when you're wordsmithing, you should have the word, the words. That you want to put in there. And, you know, I think what. The, what our city attorney has proposed, I think is good. It just kind of codifies what we were doing last year anyway. So I'll support it, but I think it's, you know. Again, I, I, I think comes back to that conversation about doing your homework.
Anyone else, Alderman Jettie, did you have your hand up?
I, I did, I, I just wanted to point out to Alderman Dow that. Know that. I, I, you know, I. When, when you talk about. Director Cummings meeting with people tomorrow to make adjustments. I, when I, when I, when I reread the, the ordinance. You know, I, I like you thought that. That, you know, that, that he could make adjustments so that, you know. You know, adjustments could be made. But when I read it, 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 I, I thought I saw that, that the ordinance. Wouldn't allow that, it would only allow him to, allow the mayor to, to provide for additional. Road closures, etc. Not make adjustments in the, in the current plan as shown by those aerial photos. I thought that might be a problem and evidently Attorney Bolton agrees with me. So if, if we're correct, then. You know, this meeting that Attorney, that Director Cummings is having tomorrow will not. Allow him to, to make adjustments, you know, he's gonna have to install the barriers exactly as they're shown in the plan. But if we adopt this amendment, it, it does. It does provide us with the flexibility that I think we, we anticipated and we're expecting.
Anyone else on the amendment? Saying none, you've heard the amendment? Will the clerk call the roll on the amendment, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
No.
Alderman Harry Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Muschin.
Yes.
You have thirteen yeas and two nays.
And that motion carries. So now we're looking at a motion for final passage as amended. Discussion on that motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Bullsher.
Yes.
You're fifteen yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries, ordinance twenty-one dash fifty is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of ordinance oh twenty-one fifty-one relative to temporary fifteen-minute parking in twenty twenty-one.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of. Of this ordinance, I've lost the.
Ordinance twenty-one fifty-one.
Of ordinance twenty-one fifty-one by roll call. And I'd like to be heard on it.
Alderman Jettie.
So this goes along with the previous ordinance and it provides for. Fifteen-minute free parking. And as it reads now, from fifteen-minute free parking from noon to nine PM daily. So. You know, as a result of. People talking to me since our infrastructure committee meeting. You know, it was pointed out to me that, you know, there are areas where, you know, parking is. Because of the barriers, the parking, parking is pretty much eliminated. Except for these. These fifteen-minute areas that are shown again on that aerial view that I talked about before. So I, again, I would like to. To make them, so, so it was brought out that. That, you know, some of these areas block off parking from our retail establishments. that, you know, some of these areas block off parking from our retail establishments during a time when, when restaurants are really not using the outdoor dining area, the outdoor seating area that they, that they use at night and and by, you know, limiting it to you know, just the, the, the time periods that are put into this ordinance. It, it kind of makes it fairly rigid and I, I think it would also be a good idea to, again, allow for adjustments. And so I, I would like to make a motion to amend the the ordinance. So where it says, be it further resolved that upon recommendation of the parking manager, the mayor may approve additional parking spaces as 15 minute parking from noon to 9:00 PM daily as necessary. I would like to move to amend that to read that the mayor may adjust the location and, and timeframe of the 15 minute free parking. Period. So and, and the purpose of this would be to allow the mayor and, you know, it, it says the mayor, so I'm, I'm not I'm, I'm not trying to eliminate Director Cummings, but the parking manager works with and for Director Cummings. So we're not really eliminating him from this formula, but this would allow the, the parking manager and the mayor to adjust these parking areas and time limits. You know, as, as deemed appropriate.
So the motion is to amend. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Through you, if I can ask Alderman Jettie. From what my understanding is, is again, we're paying an independent contractor to put down these barriers as you, Alderman Jettie, you may know, they're made out of concrete. They're quite heavy, designed to be impacted by a vehicle and protect the residents who are enjoying the outdoor dining. So basically, once they become fixated, they're there. So by this particular ordinance, are you implying that they're movable now? And if they are movable, since the city does not own equipment to move it and we're paying an independent contractor, can you explain where the funding is going to come from? To do this, that would adjust this according to your amendment, please?
So thank you, Alderman O'Brien for, for the question. Yeah, yeah, nothing nothing in this ordinance is going to make the, the barriers any less heavy or any less immovable than they are. They are what they are. Whether or not they can be moved or not. You know, you know, whether we have equipment that could move them. I don't know, probably not. But this would this would allow the, the mayor and the parking manager, for example, the instead of, instead of the time being you know, noon to 9:00 PM. You know, the parking manager and the mayor could change the, you know, the time to, you know, from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Or change it from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. You know, depending on you know, on what they, what, what kind of plan they come up with to try to accommodate the retail establishments. I'm, I'm told you know, by, by the retail establishments. You know, that, you know, they're there every day and, you know, they see for example, the, the area in front of wing gates, you know, the, the barrier currently extends from from the corner of Factory Street. And so it, 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 it covers that, that here salon that's on the corner. It, and then there's San Francisco Kitchen. So it allows dining for San Francisco Kitchen. But it also covers wing gates, cardons. And then, you know, extends beyond the Nashville Garden. So you've got that whole area, that whole, you know, from Factory Street all the way past Nashville Garden to around the walkway there, I believe. You know, which is covered by a barrier. So, you know, and there is, there is some area there which allows for, you know, short time parking for, you know, takeout possibilities. But during the day, you know, like, you know, the, the, these retail establishments open up around eight, eight or 8:30 in the morning. And, and they're trying to do business all day long. The restaurants really don't you know, San Francisco Kitchen and I think Nashville Garden does have a lunchtime business, but but there are, you know, there's a lot of time there where they're not, those outdoor dining areas are, are not being used. And, and and that, you know, there's, there's, there's not any takeout being, being done. So perhaps you know, the, the time limits, perhaps allowing you know, for example, the 15 minute parking to extend from 8:30 in the morning, which would allow people to, you know, scoot in there, park for free, go into the drugstore, get their prescription and leave. Yeah, you know, that's a possibility. All, all I'm trying to do Alderman O'Brien is, is give, you know, our professionals, the parking manager and Director Cummings and the mayor the opportunity to make adjustments that are warranted. If we adopt the ordinance as is, it's set in stone or in granite or in concrete. You know, until November 15th and you know, I, I think Attorney Bolton has told us that these tweaks that we thought that Director Cummings could implement. The ordinance doesn't really allow him to do that. But the, the amended ordinance would.
Follow up?
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you. Through the chair to Alderman Jettie if, if I may, Madam President.
Yes.
Last year, I think there was, the previous one that we just discussed, the ordinance we discussed that you said wasn't flexible, but last year was extremely flexible. Wing Gates was, only had one 15 minute type of situation. And it was increased and actually took space away from another business. The Nashville Garden. Okay. So that proves that there was flexibility. But the thing is, again, what I don't understand, once these barriers go down, I don't want to give the public impression that they can come up and say, oh, this isn't working out for me. Like I say, the city doesn't own the equipment. I'm not going to go out and buy a, I don't know, a $500,000 excavator. I probably go for about that. I don't know what an excavator goes for. But like I say, I do know that we're going to be paying an independent contractor to move these things. So I don't know how much flexibility, once they go down. And like I say, Wing Gates was at the, as you remember, at the infrastructure meetings and I'm glad to see that the negotiations are still going on as brought up by Alderman Dowd to discuss these things and the barriers aren't there yet. So there seems to be some time with this. So I, I, I don't understand where the flexibility of, you know, once it's determined with the parking spaces, once the barriers go down, that's about it. You know, I think Mr. Cummings can tweak it, but there isn't any really major work that can be done because of the, the problems with the barriers. We do not have the equipment to move them.
So may I?
Alderman Jettie.
Yeah. And so, you know, this ordinance just talks about the parking, the timing of the parking, pretty much. Whether or not the barriers could be moved, you know, you raise a valid point, probably not. But that, you know, the timing of the, of the parking, you know, how long people can park, you know, what time it goes into effect, what time it ends, those things can be changed without moving anything. And, you know, your comment about last year, things things being done, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know how that was done. I, you know, I, I think I think, you know, I I and more importantly, Attorney Bolton is telling us that you know, that, that, that flexibility, you know, is, is not there. And, you know, but, and, and he recommends that we, you know, that we make a slight amendment to provide for that flexibility. We know whether or not you know, how, how things were changed during the summer. I, I, I know that, you know, I, I don't know how you know, whether that was done legally or not. I, I don't know. I, I'm just looking at it now and and it doesn't, right now, it doesn't appear that, that that flexibility would be there. And, and I, I think that's why Attorney Bolton is recommending that that it be amended to provide that flexibility, which I think is what we want.
Alderman Lopez.
So in reference to the last ordinance that we passed, which is the one which allows DPW and parking to advise the mayor on moving those barriers around. Was indicated and was the case last year that DPW can move like one or two of them around or adjust them as needed. They do that all the time when they're trying to do construction or you know, they're going to have to do it when it comes to the, the construction happening in Alex. They just can't move a couple hundred of them. So that's what the contractors are doing. If they're not able to do that, then that's why I was voting in favor of having DPW having a say. Like the mayor's not going to tell her to do something that's impossible. And they'll, they'll bring up the concerns on their behalf. That's their job. They know what they're doing. So I think this ordinance and this amendment is really just about the parking. And if we did the other one, it doesn't really make sense to hamstring it now. I think we should let the parking department advise on when, whether it's a good idea or not, and then let the mayor make a decision. The entire purpose is to pull ourselves out of micromanaging this and we're kind of trying to do all of that right now.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. If I could ask a question through you to Corporation Counsel?
Yes.
So Attorney Bolton, the way I'm understanding this, and I want to make sure I understand it completely, is that these ordinances are tied to that map. And so if we've signed it in as, as is, then they have to put them in exactly as that map is drawn. Is that the case?
Yes.
And so the follow on thought there is that we're just allowing, and, and I think the intent here, right, is that we don't, we're not going to be going up every weekend and moving these barriers. But if Director Cummings is meeting with people this next week and wants to make some adjustments, we're giving him that flexibility.
Well, that's what you did on the prior ordinance that you already made an amendment to and passed. I believe what Alderman Jettie is attempting to do here is allow the mayor to adjust the time period. So instead of noon to nine, perhaps for certain locations, it would make more sense to have it 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM or 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, 7:00 PM. You know, whatever an appropriate number is depending on the location. And I think that's the essential upshot of the amendment you're now considering.
So we're actually not talking about moving barriers here. It's just a potential move of those times and just giving additional flexibility because we already.
I, I've got to say, I don't see the mayor taking this as authority to go out and buy a $500,000 piece of equipment to move a barrier.
Well, and.
I, I don't think you ought to worry about that at all.
And to that point, I think that was, you know, the intent of both of these is that, you know, I, I trust Director Cummings, the mayor, all of the people who are going to be installing these to, you know, have some, some forethought and, and discussions and we're not going to be going out and moving these every weekend. If there's a larger problem, maybe they can put them together and do it, you know, as one big thing if something needs to be moved. But it already sounds like they're having these conversations earlier than last year to make sure that they can try to accommodate as many people downtown. So thank you.
Alderwoman Lou.
Thank you. Yeah, well, Alderwoman Kelly sort of cleared it up for us. But it is my understanding that this is just about giving flexibility to the timeframe when we when we enforce or, or have a limit to how long you can park. So for instance, at some, in the early spring, we may say, or whatever, we may say that you, you can park more than 15 minutes and up until three o'clock in the afternoon. They may, you know, based on some of the comments I've heard from a few of the vendors, a few of the store owners downtown, they do feel that the restaurants, you know, aren't open until later in the day and, and yet we, they can't get people. They can't have people park in front of their store for 45 minutes while they shop. So it's only about the timeframe of the, the enforcement of 15 minute parking. It's not anything other than that. So I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The motion is to amend giving the mayor the authority to adjust timeframes. Is that, that's the gist of it? Is there any other discussion on the amendment? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Bullsher.
Yes.
You have 13 yeas and two nays.
Thank you. That motion carries. The motion before us now is for final passage as amended. Is there discussion on that motion? Saying none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Laws.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harry Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Bullsher.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
And that motion carries and ordinance 20-51 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of ordinance 2152 authorizing a stop sign on Kobe Road at its intersection with Ridge Road.
Alderman Harry Gaffray.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion, oh geez, my screen, wait. Shoot. Okay. I motion for final passage of 021052 by roll call.
Motion is to, for final passage of ordinance 2152. Discussion on that motion? Saying none, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Clay.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Yes.
Alderman Lars.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes.
Alderman Wolscher.
Yes.
You have 15 yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries and ordinance 2152 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of resolution R 21120 relative to the transfer of $755,000 from Department 194 contingency account 70112 contingency for educational priorities to various school department accounts.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Lopez, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clay, Alderman Harriet Gaffray, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cleaver. And I will, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Wolscher. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of resolution R 21121, change of the name of Veterans Drive to Armory Drive and changing the name of the Broad Street Parkway to Veterans Parkway.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dow. Alderman Harriet Gaffray, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Clay, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Wolscher.
Alderman Lars.
Alderman Lars. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of resolution R 21122 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of up to $1,500,000 from the state of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services for COVID-19 vaccination aid.
Additional sponsors? So anyone who doesn't want to sponsor? Okay, Alderman Dow, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Harriet Gaffray, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Clay, Alderwoman Kelly, did you have your hand up, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Wolscher. Did everybody?
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Karen.
Alderman Lars.
Thank you.
And Alderman Lars. Okay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance oh 2154, no parking on Conca Street from Mount Pleasant Street North for a distance of 50 feet.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dow. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance oh 2155, authorizing stop signs on the connector at its intersections with Concord and Manchester Streets.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Dow. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading of ordinance oh 2156, amendments to the ordinances relative to street name changes of Veterans Drive and the Broad Street Parkway.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Harriet Gaffray, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cleaver, Alderman Dow, Alderman Clemmons. Get everybody, oh, Alderman Clay. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Now is the period for public comment. I will open it up. I will remind people that are speaking that you should give your name and address for the record, and you have a maximum of three minutes. So who's up first?
Lori Ordolano.
Ms. Ordolano.
Hi, yes, 41 Berkeley Street. I wanted to just share a couple thoughts with the board, comments. I don't understand why the city did not make any effort to have a mechanism for the public to have their abatement application stamped this year. I understand the assessing office was under renovations and closed, but no one anticipated that it would be closed for 95% of the time. And all other cities seem to have a mechanism available for the public to get assistance and get those applications stamped, and we did not. And that ultimately resulted in my arrest. And I just recently got the police reports on that arrest. And I wrote a letter to the board several weeks ago and told you I felt Attorney Leonard should be fired. And I'm on the phone tonight to tell you how strongly I feel that she should be fired. Because this was taken way out of line. And when you go out publicly and you go to the press, and you challenge somebody's mental capabilities, and you use language like unstable and erratic, you really cross the line. And when you equate somebody to a DC rioter, which I don't think I was anything like that. I watched the video yesterday of me going into City Hall, and I looked as nonchalant and casual as you could come. I certainly didn't go there to go to legal. I wanted to get my application stamped in the assessing office, not the office, but the temporary office moved into Ms. Kleiner's office. But that just wasn't possible. I didn't need an appointment. I had gone in twice without an appointment, no issue. And it was just totally taken out of line. And the berating Jesse Newman described to the police 11 days later, that my actions in there was that I berated the people. The phone call by Mindy Lloyd to the police is anything but a hostile scene. And to have Jesse Newman and Celia Leonard describe the situation and their concerns as if it was a DC rioting situation. And then to listen to Mindy Lloyd on the phone with them there, and the dispatcher saying, are you concerned? Is she threatening? No. Do you want to stay on the phone until the police get there? No, I'll hang up. And she just hangs up. It just doesn't match. It just doesn't match. And the bullies and the threatening and the erratic and the unstable people are right in that legal office. When the mayor has to call business leaders to apologize for the conduct of Attorney Bolton, because he's so out of control on a phone, screaming that it requires the mayor to make an apology, maybe he's the unstable one. Maybe we can talk about that in court.
Okay, you need to wrap up, Ms. Ordolano, please?
I will. And I'm going to play a tape of Celia Leonard's conduct that's going to go out on the internet. And we can evaluate that and decide whether she's stable too. But I think what the city did was horrendous, just horrendous. And I don't think it needed to go to that level.
Okay, your, your time is up, Ms. Ordolano. Thank you. Anyone else from the public that wishes to give comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes, the name and address for the record, please.
Marion Knight, 29 Harris Street in Nashua.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm the person that emailed you proposing that you establish an end date to your mask emergency order. And I don't want to get lost in a general mass, mass discussion. So I'm going to focus on the nature of the emergency. And because I'm not talented at speaking, I have written down my main points. So I'll be quick. First is my personal opinion that an order passed due to an emergency should always have an end date. Otherwise, it may never be reviewed and have the possibility of to be rescinded. I would, I've been told in the past by politicians that unless it's required, that generally they don't want to act on anything that they're not forced to. So here we go. I'm asking for an end date so that you would be required to review the mask mandate. And that's my goal. It's important to those of us who disagree with the ordinance, feel unheard and disrespected and often forgotten. I reviewed the minutes of the May 1st, 21st, 2020 meeting. At that time, you were looking for available ICU beds and a vaccine. And I point out that those goals have been achieved, and we have treatments for coronavirus. So I'm curious about the board's, what is the continued emergency that, you know, what are the goals that we need to achieve in order to consider an end date that have, that haven't already been achieved? I'm, if you need science, I would encourage you to read the Great Barrington Declaration signed by more than 50,000 medical professions worldwide, including medical doctors and epidemiologists from Harvard Yale and Stanford. Now we understand the virus better. We have treatments, we have vaccines, we know its target group is senior citizens like myself and/or people with pre-existing conditions. I am not saying it's not a tragedy that 79 people have died. But I'm asking if you would consider adding an end date to the mandate, could be your future date chosen by you. And I just want you to continue to review the situation and make sure there's still an emergency and an end date would achieve that goal. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public that wishes to give public comment? I'm not seeing anyone. Okay, remarks by members of board. Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. I just, excuse me, a couple of quick things to say. One is, I'd like to extend my condolences to the the Bellknap family. I agree with everything that was said. She was an incredible woman, and I've gotten to know Sandy a little bit over the past couple of years. I did not know her mother, but I know they are an incredible family. And I love to hear the stories of the gardens and whiskey, the cat that that comes to visit and so on. So I'm very sorry to hear for their family. The other thing is, I just want to make an announcement that Ward 3 and 7 will be having a parking study, the second meeting this Thursday, I believe. I should double check that, yes, at 6:00 PM. And the information is on the the parking webpage. And it's going to be in conjunction with Boards 3 and 7. And it's the second meeting. I think they're going to be doing three wards again. So I hope that those from Ward 3 will be in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Dow.
Yes, just a couple of quick things. One, well, I haven't seen them myself. I'm told by Dan Hudson, the city engineer, that on Charlotte Avenue, the speed indicators have been mounted, the solar ones, and hopefully they'll be controlling the speed. And the soon as the spring is a little bit warmer, we'll be paving Charlotte Avenue, one of the first streets. So that will be good. Relative to the comment on masks, from my personal opinion, until we get a recommendation from our Board of Health, the mask mandate stays. When the Board of Health and the doctors on the Board of Health tell us that masks are no longer required, then we can do something with the ordinance. And the second thing, I just want to give my complete support for our legal department and all of our attorneys. I think they do a phenomenal job. And, and I, I think they're a very strong asset to the city. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I wanted to express my condolences as well to Sandy Bellknap. Kathy Bellknap, or Catherine Bellknap was a, although I didn't know her very well, she knew me because my grandmother lived down the street on Huey Street. And when I was just a baby, I guess she, she would take care of me sometimes or visit with my, my grandmother and, and stuff. So we were, our families were, were close back in the 80s and in the 90s. So it was a little before the time I could remember. But obviously, through the years, through my, they were always very supportive of me in my political career and in other things. And I just, you know, it's sad, sad to hear that. And I, I just want to send my sincerest condolences to the family. And I, I also wanted to just take a moment as well to wish everybody a happy and safe St. Patrick's Day. Make sure if you're going out, that you stay socially distant, that you wear your mask when you're entering and exiting a building and not basically when you're not sitting at a table. And if you think something is unsafe, if you go to a place and you feel like they're, you know, not following the social distancing rules or things like that, you know, you should report that. Because we want to make sure that people come down to Nashua, but we want to make sure that they do it responsibly, and that they have a, that we have a safe holiday. So while I would encourage people to obviously go out and enjoy the holiday, do it safely, please. And if you see that there's an establishment or a place that's not following the rules, don't be afraid to be the one to, to contact the city. Because we'll get down there and enforce it. So thank you very much.
Welcome. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I want to express my condolences to Sandy. I know I've already spoken to her about her mother, but also to everyone who knew her in her neighborhood, everyone who worked the polls with her. She was dedicated. She was always there. Those, those hours at the polls are long, and she was always patient. She's just such a steady presence. I don't know that, that she or Sandy necessarily. I think they're humble, and I don't know that they know how many lives they've touched. But they're very well appreciated in the community, and they're very well respected. I know that she'd be very proud of how Sandy is involved in the community as well. Particularly coming up as an issue very near and dear to their hearts, Mohawk Tannery presentation on March 15. Somebody, Madam President, scheduled that on my birthday, but I'll be
You.
Presentation. So I just wanted to remind everybody that that's coming up. That's a major development for that area, and the neighbors were very concerned. It is another huge opportunity to clean up an area that's been neglected and to really do something with that, that community. So I'm looking forward to it. I think Alderman Clemmons covered most of what I would want to say for recommending caution. Maybe just the Irish blessing, may the wind be always at your back, and maybe the mask on your face because it's blowing your vapors towards somebody. The, with regards to the masking ordinance, I have already asked the Health, the Board of Health to, to develop conditions for it, so that it isn't entirely open ended, but also so that it is a medically informed policy and not a political exercise. So being able to identify specific factors and timeframes and come up with a phased approach, I think is important. I had already suggested that some of the business owners that were particularly passionate about the curfew issue engage the Board of Health so that they could, they could present the, the business owner's side of things and get that kind of guidance. I know that the city has been working very closely with trying to make sure that masking ordinances are observed, general public health ordinances are being observed. And to that end, I've been bringing a lot of donated reusable masks to different restaurants because some of them don't fit people, particularly people's beards, don't fit them particularly well. And if you're a restaurant worker and you're given like one mask five weeks ago or five months ago, even if you're washing it every night, it's probably getting worn out. So I want to thank all the volunteers who continue to quietly manufacture these things in their own time, particularly Padma and her volunteers, the group that lots organized. And I also want to remind business owners that the United Way is sitting on a giant stockpile of masks. You can get 50 or so if you want to make sure that you have plenty for any people who might be coming to St. Patrick's Day standing in line or For any people who might be coming to St. Patrick's Day standing in line or might forget their own, it's handy to be able to hand it out to them rather than have to ask them to go back to their car or whatever and find a mask. So there are solutions for all of these things and there is support available.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I too wanted to express my condolences to Sandy Bellknap. Her and her mother are just stand-up citizens and always have been sort of at the crux of so many things that go on in this community. I know that many of us have attended a Constitution Party in her garden. And it was just, they're just such wonderful people who welcomed you into their homes and, you know, really supported the things that we do on a local level here. So thinking of them for sure and very grateful for every, every opportunity I had to spend with the both of them. So I also just wanted to talk about downtown. I know that I sometimes talk about it ad nauseam, but it was a forty or fifty degree day today and it was just really beautiful to be in our downtown, seeing people getting ready for next week. We have a new ice cream shop, we took a walk on the Riverwalk. So I just wanted to commend everybody who's gotten us this far. I think we've come a long way even in the last four years. And I'm really looking forward to what happens next in our downtown.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to say just basically to the caller, to the reminder that, yeah, we have the Board of Health, but we're also under the guidelines of the Governor's Emergency Orders with a lot of this. And that particular caller may take interest in the following bills. House Bill two seventy-five, four fourteen, four thirty-three and four seventeen. I think they're all gonna get morphed into four seventeen, which is basically nuts and bolts, but it'd be limiting the Governor's Authority on emergency orders. So she may want to pay attention to that. Also, I would like to feel, let Alderman Lopez know that I feel his pain for a meeting on his birthday on March fifteenth. I don't know who scheduled finance meeting on March seventeenth, but I too feel your pain, okay? Which is perfect segue for me to get into, I would like to wish all my Irish compadres there a happy St. Patrick's Day, particularly to all the veterans recruits and the rookies and those that just want to celebrate on that one day. But do keep in mind, we do have the pandemic, so please be careful. Follow the guidelines that are out there. And, and it's a great day to be Irish, it's a great day to be an American. And so enjoy it properly, please be careful. If you need an Uber or something like that, much more better. And enjoy the corned beef and cabbage, which I would like to dispel the rumor, it is not really Irish. It just happened to be the cheapest piece of meat the Irish could afford back in, back then. You go to Ireland and look at you like you have eight heads if you ask for corned beef. I think now they would give it to you, but it's more American Irish than anything else. So, salute to my Irish friends, happy St. Patrick's Day.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
I just want to say thank you to our lawyers and that staff. I think they are wonderful. I kind of take offense sometime when people throw stabs at them because I know that they work very hard for the city. And I also want to mention and agree with my colleague O'Brien in terms of people that are worried about when the mask ordinance and things of that nature will end in New Hampshire. But I really do depend on our health department as well as our governor. But he is the one that has the state issues going on. And there are a lot of bills there to retract his statements. Otherwise, to make, make it appear as though he's, he doesn't have the power to do anything in this state. So I'm just gonna say that people need to pay attention to that because after the insurgents in DC, I feel as though sometimes that there's a group rising here in New Hampshire for the same type of situation. And so, you know, I just want to say that, you know, we, we really need to keep our ears open and, and, and our eyes clear so that we can see what's truly happening in New Hampshire. Because sometimes I feel as though people are really missing the real factors in New Hampshire.
Thank you, anyone else? Alderman, second bite at the apple, Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, I just, I just received a text just for the general information. Unfortunately, Alderman's laptop battery has died, so she won't be on the next vote, but just to explain her abstinence. And, Madam President, you're looking for a motion?
In a minute, I will be.
Okay, then I'll give you that minute, thank you, Madam President.
I don't see anyone else that was looking to speak, so I just wanted to throw in a few words here. I know Kathy Bellknap, I've known Sandy Bellknap for, I don't know, well over twenty-five years, I believe. They are great people, really the salt of the earth, would do anything for anyone, worked hard at the polls, worked hard at everything, have the most beautiful garden I think I've seen in the city. Just, just a fantasy land of flowers and beauty and it's really amazing, really stunning. But Kathy was a very hard worker. She enjoyed working at the polls, being out with people, very, very nice person and she will be truly missed. The other thing I want to chime in on to is our legal office and the quality and the great staff we have up there. So to you, Attorney Bolton and your, your staff, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman O'Brien.
Now, thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Aldermen's meeting be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes, please.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Karen.
Yeah.
Alderman Clemens.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Oh.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Alderwoman Lou.
Yeah.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Schmidt.
Oh, yes.
Alderman Lars.
Yes.
Alderman Cleaver.
Yes.
Alderman Harriet Gaffray.
Yes, but Lopez can stay on here if he wants to.
Alderman Wolscher.
Yes.
You have fourteen yays and one nay.
Looks like I'm out coded, see you later.
And that motion carries and we are adjourned at ten twenty-eight PM, thank you, everyone.